We will call this meeting of the Genesee County Board of Commissioners to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd, Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Gutsinger.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Schumaker.
Present.
Commissioner Kuznel.
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Here.
And Commissioner Flowelling.
Present.
Okay, now we'll do invocation. Dr. Brown has agreed to do that for us. If you wouldn't, then after that, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we could all bow our heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless us today with wisdom. Bless us to guide the business of this county so that we can benefit the residents and all of our constituents in our respective districts. Please grant us the will to operate with civility and courtesy, Lord, and please help us to navigate this season with our complex roles as public servants, Lord. This we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. You, I need approval of the meeting minutes for May 28, 2025. I have a motion to support any discussion. No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We set this time aside for public comment. Anyone who would like to speak to the board, please come up to the mic. If we have a line, please step to the right. Please state your name and where you live, once you come up to the microphone.
Good evening, Commissioners. Dominique Clemmons, Flint Township, Genesee County Clerk and Register of Deeds. I just wanted to really quickly introduce you all to our Clerk Register Summer Intern that will be with our office this summer, Brandon Sandler, who is a rising senior at Michigan State University. He's interested in law and government. I wanted to give him the chance to introduce himself and welcome him to the county.
Thank you all for welcoming me. I'm here to be a learner and observer, as someone that mainly studies and specializes in policy research and government research. This is a very cool opportunity for me to really take a lot from this. So thank you all for welcoming me to the space.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. We get your name and where you live?
Yeah, my name is Ellen Y. Keaton, and I live in the city of Brighton. So I'm here to talk about MTA service to Brighton. So I'm not sure if all of you are aware, but MTA is going to be cutting weekend service to Brighton starting on the 23rd. Now, this is a big problem because one of the runs of this service is the 9:30 PM that leaves Flint at 9:30 on Sunday. And the problem here is that that particular run is kind of essential, and that is one of the runs being cut with this service cut. So that run is used by... So the intended purpose of the buses that go to Brighton is to allow people to commute to work in Brighton. And the 9:30 PM is used for people... by people who work third shift on Monday mornings. So, you know, by cutting this service, MTA is going to cause a big problem with those people. So my hope with bringing it up here at this Board of Commission meeting is that I hope some of you can try and resolve this issue before it's too late because the new service changes are going to be going into effect on the 23rd. And, you know, that's... I hope this can be somehow resolved before then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mary Beth Seaward, and I live in Flint Township. I have two things to speak about tonight. First, I want to express my appreciation to the six Commissioners who voted at the last meeting on May 28th to approve the resolution to acknowledge June as Pride Month. I especially want to thank Commissioner Wayhill for introducing the resolution and Commissioner Dr. Brown for bringing it to the full Board. Genesee County has a very diverse population, and it is important for our county government to recognize and support everyone who lives here. I also think it is very important for the Commission to support these resolutions for diverse groups, especially if they have been marginalized in the past. It will not take up much of the Board's time. It can probably be accomplished in five or 10 minutes, and it is very meaningful to the groups being acknowledged. I also want to thank the entire Board of Commissioners for hosting, along with U of M Flint, the Impact Genesee Summit, which was held on June 5th. I was fortunate to be able to attend and found it to be extremely educational and insightful. The speakers and sessions were outstanding, and the economic future for Genesee County is looking brighter. There is much work to be done, but our county government is facing the challenge and demonstrating their willingness to do the work, and that gives me hope. Again, I want to show special appreciation to Commissioner Dr. Brown for her outstanding leadership in putting together this event. Thank you.
Sir?
Yeah, my name is Josh Bogus. I've got property in Ward 1 and in Ward 3. I was in public comments the last time. I have property in Mr. Lloyd's. It's getting taxed over 900% of its appropriate taxes. That's theft. I had to hand it to Larry Green. I don't know how he's getting this supported. I've done told you about Judge Hannibal and his treason and his actions, and I've heard from nobody out of your offices, absolutely nobody. This is America. This is not funny. I will be paying your 900% overdue taxes for your one year while I sue you in federal court and destroy your fucking budget. Please start working for the people, all people, black people, white people, purple people, gay people, straight people. Start working for the people and not for yourselves. This is pathetic that I gotta come here and say this shit. Vicki Haley Block, your next judge, get her off your budget. She is getting you sued. We sent out this shit. The surety bonds replied, "I didn't get the right one." I'll send it out again, and it will be gotten right. We are gonna uphold the Constitution. We are not gonna act in pure treason. This is not communist Germany. Somebody needs to pay attention to the citizens of this county. This is getting sad and pathetic. So Del Rico J. Lloyd, you are the district commissioner where this land theft... it almost looks like Rico racketeering from here. Somebody needs to do something here and speak up. You're all speechless. I'm welcoming anybody to challenge anything I say. I prove it all. It has been entered into the federal court system here in a lawsuit.
Sound short. Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jennifer Staten. I am the supervisor for Monday Township. I wanted to come here today and thank Ms. Brown for her recent conference that she held here in the city of Flint. Thank you very much. I know a lot of people got a lot out of it, and it was very appreciative. So thank you very much. On another note, I wanted to make the Commission aware that Monday Township, we are trying to put a mass transit authority busing route into our township down the Hill Row Corridor. We are in the final stages right now of getting that finalized and creating that and getting that done. So that is going to be a wonderful thing for all Genesee County residents to be able to access the Hill Row Corridor, the parks, Costco. There's so many different things that you are going to be able to access now when you didn't have that transportation before. I noticed the person that had spoke a few times before me had mentioned the lack of the bus route going to the Brighton location. I would recommend there is an MTA meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, and they do have a comment section there. And I would recommend that that be made aware at that meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM at the MTA. I know the county Commissioners don't have so much to do with the MTA Transit Authority, but going to the MTA and voicing that concern at 9:00 AM tomorrow would probably be in the best interest, especially knowing that it's going to be taking effect on the 23rd of this month. On another note, I just want to thank all the Commissioners for all of your hard work, and God bless you.
How y'all doing? My name is Ms. Savage. I am up here because first, I would like to express with the young lady that was just up here what she was saying. A lot of people that catch the bus on that second shift from the MTA, they go to work early already, and they're already waiting there to go to work. And a lot of them are on third, first splits. So some of them don't start at 11:00. They start at like 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock. So they're going in at 9:00, 10:00 o'clock, whatever time the MTA bus drops them off on that Sunday, because we all know that the bus stops running early on Sundays. So that's what this young lady's main concern is. And if you guys stop that, there's gonna be a lot of people that are not gonna be able to feed their families due to that. We already have a lot of budget cuts with the food pantries, and they're already doing a lot of budget cuts with the, I think, EBT. But that's not my major concern. But I wanted to address that to make sure it was very clear on what it was that this young lady was trying to address to you guys. My major concern right now is the fact that we are having major budget cuts right now in Genesee County, and nobody can accommodate for these budget cuts. But there are grants that are being approved for schoolings and school systems that are no longer up and running. That's where my major concern is. Nobody can account for where this month... So McKinley School, and if you guys don't know where that school is, it's off of Atherton Road, okay? There was a grant approved for $750,000. That school's been closed for over seven years, okay? When I dug deep into it, it was for a respiration and restorage of a storage room inside of that school, okay? They put a playground outside. I never known a playground that cost $750,000. But yet, there are other budget cuts that are coming. And then us as residents are the ones that have to be accountable for whatever that is being lost or not being accountable for. We need to figure out a system that works for us, and everybody needs to be on that same system, please.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Public comment closed. Once, twice, three times, public comment is closed.
Mr. Chair, may I just make a comment? So a couple of the speakers mentioned MTA. While we don't control MTA, we do have representation on that board. And if the Commissioners could say who they are, Charles and James, okay. All right. Is there a meeting tomorrow morning? Is that your...
The meeting is next Thursday at 8:00 AM.
I see. Okay. But if people wish to address concerns with MTA, they can go to their website, find out. There's a phone number, email, and meeting agenda. Okay. Thank you.
However, I must add that the people who are directly affected would not be able to attend that meeting because of the busing scheduling. They would not be able to get back from Brighton in time to attend that meeting. So I do plan to address it at the Board meeting.
Okay. Will MTA take phone calls presumably and pass along comments, you think, to the Director?
Well, I'm sure they will.
Yeah, that's an option. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wayhill. Okay, under Communications, we have an update from our Health Officer, Michelle Estelle.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for having us. I actually have our administrative team here, and each of us will discuss certain parts. So we have a four-part presentation. So I think you guys remember early this year, we mentioned that we would... Actually, it's the end of 2024. We mentioned that we would be going through accreditation for... with the state of Michigan. So we're giving you an update on what happened during that presentation. How do we work this thing? Wrong way. There we go. Okay. So in February, February 19th, the week of February 10th, we had a week-long accreditation visit from many different departments with the state of Michigan. So some of the departments, like the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Department of Environmental Quality, and several other state divisions, depending on which program governs our programs. So the accreditation process occurs every three years. Basically, what it does, under the Michigan Local Public Health and Accreditation Program, they come down to conduct reviews to assess the compliance and the minimum program requirements. So we have to comply with the medical program requirements. Basically, the purpose of it is to affirm that our department's role in protecting and improving the health, the public health through services such as vaccinations, disease prevention, environmental safety, and emergency response, as well as health promotion. Okay, so some of the areas of strengths are listed here, but these were comments from the... from our observers. I want to point out that under... for all of our program indicators, we met all of them. So we met everything. But they did give some areas of recommendations, which will come up later. Some had no recommendations, some had a few more recommendations, but we met everything. Okay. So with that being said, under the powers and duties, that's when they're looking at the overall Health Department and basically the administrative aspect. GCHD demonstrates strong enforcement of health laws, effective cross-agency collaborations, and robust community engagement. Some of our notable strengths were disease investigation protocols, our health equity partnerships, and some public risk communications, and extended clinical accessibility. So our next indicator was for... or next program was our Food Service Program, which is located in our Environmental Health Division. Basically, a summary of this is it conducts 100% of their quality assurance reviews for the food service establishments, which includes plan review, inspections in the facility. It's based on a risk-based evaluation program, our standardized training program, inspection... and we utilize an inspection software to contribute to a thorough and consistent oversight in the facility. So this makes sure that our facilities get consistent inspections and consistent guidance. Okay. The next area is our onsite wastewater, and they have two different areas of investigation. So the areas of strength, so we ensure that we have a consistent monitoring of our septic system, and it is proactive in addressing complaints to the stakeholders, and our facilities are held accountable for timely resolutions and if there's system failures, to prevent contamination of the ground and areas. And sometimes you guys get complaints about that, because when people don't want to make the corrections. Some of the area recommendations for growth in the area, while all of our indicators were met, they did recommend that we update our policies and procedures to reflect changes in our new permitting software and system. So we had to update our software system, and basically, we need to change our... some of our internal policies to make sure it reflects how that specific... that system specifically works. Okay. All right. So the next area is... Oh, went in the wrong direction. Sorry. Oops, still going in the wrong direction. All right. The next area is the general communicable disease control. Some of the areas of strength is we efficiently manage communicable disease reports, perform weekly data analysis, and submit accurate reports to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. The department produces annual disease reports and maintains a defined process for both individual and outbreak investigations. Some recommendations or areas of growth, although we met the indicator for this, they suggest clarifying procedures for out-of-state referrals in MDSS, including status updates and case assignments. All right. Recommendations for growth in that area as well, and this is a big program for 1.2, and many of the programs have multiple indicators. So the first is 1.1. 1.2, under this program, they recommend we consider excluding things that are not considered a case in our status weekly surveillance logs. So sometimes we are investigating something and throughout the process, it's determined that it's not actually, for example, a case of measles. And so they recommend we exclude that from our logs. Other areas of recommendations that our support staff... we support staff training documentation. It's recommended that we maintain a training spreadsheet detailing staff names, courses, and attendance dates. So we just need a better system for that. And for all of these things, we've already completed them or are already working on. With... so if we go to the next area. So the last area recommendation is we... oh, we've already gone through this. So next is for immunizations. One of our areas of strength is that we deliver timely vaccinations. We proactively track the immunization records, and we achieve high coverage rates across our population, for population groups. But we... they're do... our areas of recommendations. So the first is we... they recommend reinstating annual mock drills for mass vaccination and updating mass vaccination plan to include storage and transport protocols. The next for 1.2, they want us to institute client satisfaction surveys. They should also be mailed to increase participation and complete it annually. And the policy should be revised for clarity and updated on the department website. Next, for 1.4, for vaccine reminder system, we should encourage... oh, GCD, we are encouraged to implement electronic recall and appointment reminders through our EMR system and phone calls. So that's through our Epic. Indicator 2.1, we should... the department should post its immunization fee schedule online for public access, which we've done. They had several comments on the website. What we discovered is there were some broken links. Sometimes individuals, if they had a search engine for us in the past, even if we've updated the website or we've... now we have a new look, they would go to an old page that really doesn't exist. So but sometimes, we had to go in there and put like 404 error. So we had to go back and make sure we got rid of any broken links, things that didn't exist. Even if they go to an old page that doesn't really exist, they get an error message now and get directed to the proper page. 2.3, we... we should protect the clients and... I'm sorry. To protect client and staff, a mandatory staff vaccination policy is recommended, along with an annual immunization record review during respiratory season. So that's what they're recommending for our staff internally. 2.4 is suggested that GCHD staff receive MDHHS Quarterly Immunization Report Record for internal review and awareness. Right. And the last recommendation for immunizations is the department should ensure timely reconciliation of return waste transaction reports and follow-up on any discrepancies in Mecca. Okay. So now we're moving to our HIV/AIDS and STID program. Some areas of strength is that we offer comprehensive HIV testing, treatment, and maintain a high linkage to care rates for individuals newly diagnosed. Then for our family planning, there were no areas of recommendation for that. But with our family planning, areas of strength, family planning services include counseling, contraceptive access, and accessible education materials tailored to our community needs. For our children's special health care, we effectively manage our children's special health care program, insurance services, and access consistently... and we have consistent client follow-up. For hearing and vision, our department provides comprehensive hearing and vision screenings for children with thorough tracking and referrals, as well as follow-ups. There was an area of recommendation for our hearing and vision. We're encouraged to revise the fail with RX letter to include clearer language about the need for a full eye examination when referrals are made, and we've updated that. Now for our WIC program, which is our last area, our program excels, program admin... Now for our WIC program, which is our last area, our program excels, program administration, supporting eligible families in nutrition, education, breastfeeding promotion, and maternal health sources. So that is the end of our accreditation visit. So now we want to introduce Dr. Corsi, who is going to talk about some upcoming new initiatives we're working on. Everyone else is talking about new initiatives that we are working on, and good news. Oh, boy. Total right.
All right. Hello, everyone. So just kind of keeping it brief, we wanted to let you know about some of the more exciting things. I know accreditation can get a little bit in the weeds. We're really grateful that everything went well, but it's just some new initiatives that we have going on. So one of those is that we have an HPV vaccination campaign grant that we were awarded through NACHO, or the National Association of County and City Health Officials. So we've luckily got some of that funding in, and we're now able to start doing some of the work. So what we're doing is we are doing interviews with parents of teens to learn about their perceptions of the HPV vaccine and use that information to inform our making of educational materials to be able to do outreach and better target this population. In Genesee County, our HPV vaccination rates are significantly lower than the state. We're around 36% versus 44% in the state for completion for adolescents. And then if you look at like a national level, we're even significantly lower than that. It's usually, it's closer to like 65% complete at a national level. So certainly an area that we're focused in on, and we think HPV vaccination is so important for cancer prevention. Oops. And then another thing that we're doing, this is like in the very early stages, but we currently have a doctoral student who's from the University of South Florida, but is a Flint native, who is working with us to explore what GCHD could do in the future related to PFAS or PFOS education and interventions. So she's really looking at what other health departments across the country are doing, looking at best practices, and she's going to compile a report for us and see if there's anything that we might be able to do based off of those recommendations and seeing what other people are doing. So those are some of the interventions I wanted to highlight. Oh, I did forget to mention that for the HPV grant, we also, we're accepted to present at a Michigan premier public health conference, so we're excited about that as well. That'll be in October. And I will pass it off to Brad, our deputy health officer.
Good afternoon, everyone. So I'm going to be speaking about our strategic plan development for the Genesee County Health Department. Approximately 18 months ago, we convened an internal group of about 10 staff members throughout the health department to form the strategic plan committee. And the purpose of that was to develop a new strategic plan for the health department that would guide us and help us focus on priorities for the next five years. So from the start, we were very intentional about making this an inclusive process, including our staff, community members, and also stakeholders throughout the county, so that they had a voice in the process. To date, what we've done, we've conducted an internal SWOT analysis. So this was an internal survey for our staff. We had over a 70% rate of return on those surveys, which was exceptionally high, and we were really proud of the results of that survey. We've also conducted community and stakeholder listening sessions. So we partnered with the University of Michigan-Flint to facilitate those and analyze the qualitative data that's came back from that to help guide us in our priorities in the strategic plan. And then finally, we have also created an environmental scan, which is inclusive of local and regional data and trends to help us guide in our priorities. So from these things, we have created new mission, vision, and values for the health department. The internal SWOT analysis and feedback from staff were directly applied to these new mission, vision, and values. So we're really proud that this, again, was an inclusive process that all of our staff were involved in. The timeline for this is the strategic plan is going to cover the years 2025 through 2030, and we expect the plan to be fully implemented on September 1st of this year. Then I'll add too that we also submitted an abstract with our partners at University of Michigan-Flint for upcoming conference, the Michigan Premier Public Health Conference, to showcase how partnering with a local university and developing a strategic plan for a health department looks. And I'm happy to announce that we were accepted and will be presenting at that conference. The next initiative is a mobile health unit, so I'm really excited to talk about this one. The health department, we've longed to have a mobile health unit to expand our services throughout the community and really meet people where they are at, instead of expecting them to come to us when they need services. So this mobile health unit, again, is, the purpose is to expand access of our public health services in a fully equipped mobile unit. And once we were given the opportunity to seek out this venture, we jumped right on it, and we started the RFP process. The RFP was issued in March of this year, and we had, happy to announce that we had 10 vendors submit proposals for the project. So from that, we developed a diverse cross-departmental team of reviewers that came from our own health department, but also came from facilities and operations, risk management, and fiscal services. They're all involved in that review. From that process, we developed a scoring sheet and selected our top three vendors based on the needs of the project. And now we're in the process of conducting final interviews with those vendors to determine who's going to be our top applicant. Next steps will include, as I mentioned, determining who that top vendor is, and then providing final recommendations to you as a board through the board approval process, and we wish to do that by the end of the summer, so in August, by August of 2025. Once approved and we have a contract in place, we expect to have delivery of the unit within one year. Now I will hand it off to our quality licensing and emergency response administrator, Ashley
Good evening. GCD, GCHD is prepared to introduce a unique and forward-thinking initiative, Daddy as a Doula, or the DAD initiative. This initiative is funded by the Michigan Health Endowment Fund in May of 2025. This is the only maternal and infant health project of its kind funded in Genesee County this year. The goal is simple but powerful. Equip fathers with culturally responsive doula-adjacent training so they can confidently support their partners during pregnancy, labor, and postpartum. This program not only promotes healthier birth outcomes, but also strengthens early father-child bonds, reduces maternal stress, and improves access to care for our families. GCHD is actively seeking partnerships with local organizations to ensure this program is evidence-based, community-informed, and rooted in compassion and empowerment. Implementation will begin this summer, and our first cohort is scheduled to launch in The next initiative will be our vector-borne disease surveillance program. Our surveillance program will operate from June through September when mosquito and tick activity is at its peak during this time. Weekly mosquito trappings are to be conducted at five key locations throughout the county. These sites are selected based on historical West Nile activity and underserved areas where mosquito spraying is limited. Bi-weekly, bi-weekly, excuse me, tick drags have been completed in high-risk recreational areas to monitor for the presence of ticks that carry arboviruses. All collected specimens are identified and categorized by our environmental health staff and then sent to Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Bureau of Laboratories for disease testing as well as identification verification. We plan to use this data to track disease trends, issue public health alerts, and guide our education and prevention efforts. We do have the devices to trap the mosquitoes out at the sites at this time. All of the devices do have all-weather tags attached to them. It is displayed on there. It says do not touch. The QR code does take the individual who is encountering the trap to educational resources and background information on what the device is and what the initiative is. And this concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Is there any members of the board that would like to ask any questions or make any statements? Mr. Fu, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to any one of the speakers. Couple of questions about the SCI HPV, HPV programs.
You said, wait, we can answer.
Are you, I don't think I missed it, but are you primarily focused on treatment or prevention or both for the SCI HPV programs?
Go ahead.
Yeah. So it's STI and HIV, I believe that's what you're.
There's the SCI HIV and the HPV.
Okay. So I'll let Dr. Corsi speak to the HPV component, the STI and HIV program. So we test and treat for STIs, and we test and refer for treatment of services for HIV.
And then, so for HPV testing, it can only be done in women at this point when you have your pap exam. So we do offer pap services through our family planning services. So yes, we do test to identify HPV. There is no official treatment for HPV. If you identify it on a pap exam, then those individuals are usually, we refer them to OB-GYNs, where they have consistent follow-up, and they follow all the great obstetrics and gynecology guidelines to determine if they need further testing, biopsies, et cetera. So from our perspective, our goals are really HPV prevention with vaccine campaigns. And then two would be early identification by hopefully getting those people to come in and have those pap exams, and so that way we can keep them, a close eye on them. If we know that they have HPV, that's a high risk for developing cervical cancer down the line.
More, if I may?
Yes, continue, please.
So with both these programs, do you provide any information, especially to the teen population on abstinence?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
With both these programs, do you provide any information, especially to the teenage population, on abstinence as a form of prevention?
Yeah, so in terms of the HPV campaign, we're still developing it, so I don't have all of the information about what we're planning to disseminate for that, but our family planning program always offers abstinence as an option, as well as other services.
Thank you. One more, if I may. Mr. Chair, one more for me. So with your mobile healthcare unit, will that be available for any type of response for like mass casualty incidents, or is it more just illness-based?
Yeah, we actually, we did build into our RFP that it would be allowed to be, provide all of our services at the health department, including education and outreach, but also to be able to be used in emergency response situations.
Thank you.
Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to just applaud the health department for all of the fine work that you all are doing. I'm especially excited about the doc student doing the PFAS study. I'd love to see the final product of that. I am also excited about the mobile health unit and the fact that 10 proposals were submitted. Can you tell me a little bit about the financing for that project?
So the proposal so far, a rough estimate is they're averaging about $500,000 for the unit. It is a complete custom build, so that's factored into the expenses. We are looking at incorporating at least partially the healthcare mileage into utilizing that and potentially some general funds from the health department as well.
So we know what to anticipate. I do know that, and going back to the certification part from the state, I noticed that they made a recommendation of documenting training for employees.
Yes.
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the palosity system already has a built-in system for tracking training for all employees. Do we use that?
We hadn't used it in the past, but we are working with, we actually reached out to Mike and Wendy, our previous, I don't know what her title was. When she was here, we were working with her to determine how best to use it. We've even recently reached out to ask them to create a program or to help us create a program in there to train, retrain our staff on HIPAA each year, because, you know, with health department, we, and things change, sometimes rules change. So yes, we are working with IT to do that.
Okay. And one more thing, Mr. Chair, I was at a restaurant recently, and I happened to see a beautiful certificate on display with the Genesee County logo on it, and it was certified and signed by your staff, attesting to the cleanliness and the sanitation in that particular restaurant. And they had it prominently displayed in the restaurant. So it made me feel good, because I go to that restaurant frequently. It made me feel really good that you guys certified it. So thank you for your work.
That's a program that we do each year. We pick different restaurants. We work with our sanitarians. We have a set of guidelines for them to go through, and then we choose some, but we don't choose the same ones each year, although they say, when am I going to get chosen again? Because everyone looks for it, yeah. It definitely makes the operators really happy, so, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Whale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to our team. Thank you for the presentation. Very comprehensive. Congratulations on the accreditation achievements. Couple of, I guess, big picture questions on the strategic planning that you mentioned, the surveys, the community, what do you call it, listening sessions, focus groups. What are some of the themes that are coming out of that, that you've detected? And can you share any of that with us tonight? And was there anything that surprised you? Any emerging issues that we should be aware of as a county commission?
Yeah. Regarding the community and stakeholder listening sessions, U of M-Flint is still analyzing the data from that, so we don't have a full final report on that yet, but we're happy to provide that to you all when it's completed. As far as the SWOT analysis that we did, conducted internally with the staff, one thing that comes to my mind was one of the questions is, was what is, what is our greatest asset as a health department? And overwhelmingly, the response was our staff, right? So we know that we have amazing staff, and they are passionate about what they do. So that was, I would say, that was one of the biggest takeaways that we had from that. But again, that SWOT analysis was much more in-depth than just that, and we'd be able to share that with you as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah, if, once U of M has compiled some of the high-level trends and whatnot, I'd love to see that. I'm sure others would too. So the next question isn't so much related to anything you said tonight, but for me, it's about sort of the integrity and the capability and the capacity of what you all do on a daily basis. And I spoke with the health officer a month and a half, two months ago, about my concern, especially as government, governmental relation, or governmental operations chair, about funding cuts, potential funding cuts, especially at the federal level. Are there any developments there that you can share? Anything that you're watching, concerns that you have that might affect your ability to do the programming that you just shared with us?
Well, with their frequent updates, but it's changed and the things aren't clear. The state is giving regular updates, but right now, it's mainly, we're shifting money, it's coming out of their general fund to make sure we can provide the services. We are sure we will probably have to cut something at some point, but again, it's not clear how much or what they're actually changing. They will just say things like, oh, they're going to cut things from HERSA, this particular program, healthy start may be affected. It could be cut, but they're not showing where the cuts. But other things that are discussed is it's being combined with something else. So, for example, they cut some of the COVID funding, and we had to get all the information in, but then what they did with those funds is rolled it into a different portion of disease prevention, and we can still do, you know, some COVID testing under that. But the state's been moving a lot of money around. They're giving us updates when they can. They're very closed-lipped on a lot of things because they're just as unsure as everybody else. And it seems to be hitting every, not just the health department, some of our partner programs. So we are asking questions on a regular basis, but when they're giving us information, they want to make sure that it is accurate, so.
As things get clearer, please keep in touch, okay?
We will.
So we have some sense of how you all might be affected and how we lobby on your behalf and how we communicate challenges to the public.
And we're definitely working with our financial analysts every time we find something. How can we shift, you know? What do we need to do if there's, you know, will we have to cut, you know, something? At this point, it looks like we may only have to cut one position, but we don't know if that is, and that will actually work out because we have people leave, so we don't need to fill it, and so.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there anyone else? That being said, thank you very much for coming. It's greatly appreciated. I do have one big question. It was actually not brought up by me, but it's a great question. Corporation Council brought, where are we parking this bus? Where are we parking this big vehicle? Any ideas where we are? Any ideas where we are? I think it's a great question.
Yeah.
I assume we're going to be in the new building?
We've been in discussion with Facilities and Operations about that. We're looking at the, what's the site on Lippincott? There's a site on Lippincott that we're looking to store it, and there's a potential that we can actually store it indoors there.
Okay, obviously, there's going to be a cost to store it indoors like anything, correct? So we'll figure that in the cost of the vehicle?
It's owned by the county, the site is owned by the county.
Oh, is it already?
Yeah.
Okay, super.
So I hope that we're not charged for it.
Well, we're going to charge you double, just so you know. All right, thank you so much, we really appreciate it. Thank you to your team, we thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for letting us present.
Next up, reports of standing committees, I don't see anything there. Board of Commissioners, move forward to the Community Economic Development.
Thank you.
Chair Dr. Brown and Vice Chair Dale Wayill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First resolution, I move 2025-1780, approval of a request to provide funding for the 51st Annual Gus McRae Tournament.
I have a motion to support, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I move Resolution 2025-1824, approval of the 2025 to 2029 Genesee County Consolidated Plan.
Support.
I have a motion and support, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I move Resolution 2025-1848, approval of a grant award from the Charles Stewart Mott Foundation in the amount of $1,030,000 to provide for construction of non-motorized trails in Grand Blank Township, City of Fenton, and the City of Burton. The budget for the grant is attached.
Support.
We have a motion and support, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I move Resolution 2025-1853, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Allied Challenge in the amount of $100,000 to provide for sponsorship of the Allied Challenge Golf Tournament for 2025 and 2026. That's $50,000 per year. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the Accommodation Tax Fund.
Support.
We have a motion and support, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I just want to say thank you to my, all of my fellow commissioners for helping to support and participate actively in the Impact Genesee Summit. And I want to say, give public thanks also to the University of Michigan Flint team for partnering with that sponsorship. And thank you to all of the people who attended. We had over, I think, 100 and, about 115, 120 people attend the summit, and we really anticipate lots of positive things coming from it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, the Finance Committee, Chairperson Marty Kuzno, Vice Chair Gary Gunsiger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 25-179740 to receive and file a copy of the paid county bills for the week's ending, 5/11/25 and 5/18/25, in a total amount of $9,426,604.59.
Support. I have a motion and support, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I move Resolution 25-1799, approval of a purchase order to GLOBO Holdings LLC for the fiscal year ending 2025 in a amount not to exceed $36,731.82 for the additional interpretation and translation services at Genesee County's Health Department. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the accounts listed.
Second.
I have a motion and support, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Move Resolution 25-1829, approval of proposed budget amendment to the 2425 Appropriations Resolution for various line items as described in the attached budget adjustment request.
Support.
We have a motion and support, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Move Resolution 25-1845, approval of the last one-year extension of the GFL contract that provides solid waste removal disposal at various county facilities.
Support.
We have a motion and support, any discussion? No discussion, I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Any report from the Finance Committee?
Not at this time, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Now onto Government Operations Committee, Chairman Dale Wayill and Vice Chairperson Sean Schumaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was not present for last week's committee meeting, so I will defer to the Vice Chair, who happens to be you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
To keep things moving, I would like to move items one through four. So I'll put a motion forth to move items one through four.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from that before we do? Okay, any discussion on any items? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's pass.
Mr. Chair, I do have an add-on that was shared with me in my role as Chair several hours ago. And so I'm going to move that we add to the agenda. The title of the resolution is a resolution recognizing July 2025 as Disability Pride Month.
Support.
And, Mr. Chair, if I might, this resolution was only brought to my attention this afternoon. I didn't realize that it was coming, so therefore it's an add-on. The reason that it is coming tonight from the DEI Commission is that they only met last night, finalized it last night. And normally, what I would say to them is bring it to the next committee meeting, so we can have committee and then full commission on this, which is what we like to do. But our next committee meeting won't be until the middle of July. And so I also know that we like to adopt these, assuming there's a majority that wishes to adopt it, before the month or the period of time starts, so that we're ahead of the game. So I made a judgment call with your assistants this afternoon, and I'm moving that we add it to the agenda. If it gets to the agenda through a vote of six or more, I will then read it for the record. And I'll make a second motion to pass it.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion to add it to the agenda?
I'd just like to, again, reaffirm that I don't think we're in the resolution business, so I will not be supporting to add it to the agenda.
Anyone else? Okay, let's have a roll call to add to the agenda.
Yes.
Missus Wenshaw?
No.
Commissioner Brum?
Yes.
Missus Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Schumaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzno?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayill?
Yes.
And Commissioner Flouelling?
No.
Motion passes, 62, okay.
Mr. Chair, I move a resolution, or I move the add-on for approval.
Support. We have the motion and the support. Commissioner Wayill, would you like to read it?
I would, thank you. A resolution recognizing July 2025 as Disability Pride Month, excuse me, to the Honorable Chairperson and members of the Genesee County Board of Commissioners, Genesee County, Michigan, whereas the United States and individual states across the nation have recognized July as Disability Pride Month, which commemorates the signing of the Americans with Disability Act by President George H.W. Bush on July 26, 1990, and was first celebrated as a month dedicated to recognizing the culture and contributions of people with disabilities in July 2015, upon the 25th anniversary of the act's signing. And whereas Disability Pride Month is also intended to recognize that disability is part of the natural variation of life and not something to be shunned or stigmatized, while also acknowledging that people with disabilities still face barriers to full access and participation in parts of society. And whereas, the Local Americans with Disabilities Act annual celebration will take place on July 25, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. on the front lawn of Powers Catholic High School. And whereas, Genesee County has local organizations dedicated to advancing opportunities for people with disabilities, including Project Search, which is an international program for individuals with disabilities aged 18 to 26, who work towards competitive, integrated employment; and the Disability Network, which supports and empowers people with disabilities to live independently in Genesee County through person-centered services, advocacy, and collaboration. And whereas, Project Search's model of internships and externships, supported by skills trainers, provides pathways for young people with disabilities to showcase how they can contribute to the operations of public organizations and private businesses, thereby changing mindsets about what people with disabilities can do as valued employees. And whereas, two local partners, Genesee County Parks, which works with Project Search interns at Crossroads Village, Form Our Nature Preserve, Keep Genesee County Beautiful, and other locations, and Meyer, which participates in mock interviews for Project Search participants and supports their transition into the workforce, have been especially steady employer partners. And whereas, people with disabilities of all kinds have always been important members of our community and have made contributions to every sector of government, science, law, business, education, and civil society, both in Genesee County and across the country. Therefore, be it resolved that the Genesee County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes the month of July 2025 as Disability Pride Month in Genesee County, and encourages all county departments to engage in celebratory activities and appropriate recognitions, such as participation in community events, sharing stories, and learning about people with disabilities and the contributions they have made to our county and nation. Be it further resolved that the Genesee County Clerk Register is directed to provide one copy of this resolution to each city, village, and township within Genesee County and to each county clerk in the state of Michigan.
Thank you, Commissioner Wayill, for reading that. Is there any discussion on the resolution?
Again, I think it's a very worthy group, but I feel it's very divisive for us to continue to single out certain groups while at the same time ignore other groups. So again, I will not be supporting this.
Anyone else? That being said, no one else is going to speak. I will say this, I thank the DEI Committee for this. I think there's a lot of groups out there. Several residents have stated we're going to recognize all and celebrate all. I'm hoping to see that. This is pushing the right direction, but all means all. So I'm hoping someday we get to that point, it's a society where all can be celebrated, that have given to our county, that have given to this state, that have given to this nation, and given to this world. So, thank you very much. I see Elizabeth here, thank you for being here to support your resolution. We appreciate that people show up and stand behind what they put forth. If no one else has anything to say, let's, well, let's do a roll call, just to go from there. Just, there's no, roll call, please.
Yes.
Missus Wenshaw?
No.
Commissioner Brum?
Yes.
Missus Avery?
Yes.
Missus Schumaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzno?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayill?
Yes.
And Commissioner Flouelling?
No.
Motion passes. Okay, are there any reports from?
No report, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Next up, Human Services Committee, Chairperson Charles Wimfrey and Vice Chairperson James Avery.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move Resolutions one, two, and three.
Support.
We have a motion and support, any discussion? Anything anyone wants removed to discuss? Therefore, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Committee from the Human Services Committee.
No, thank you.
Now on to Public Works Committee, Chairperson Brian Flouelling, Vice Chairperson James Avery.
Mr. Chair, I would move Resolutions one through four, with any separations.
Support.
Support, too?
James, yeah.
Motion and support, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Any unfinished business? None. New and miscellaneous business, I'd just like to make a statement. Over the last few months, here and there, we've had some contentious meetings. A lot of residents that are very passionate about what they believe. And I wanted to thank our Sheriff's Department, specifically, we have two of them that generally are here. I didn't know that. We actually have someone downstairs, I'm generally upstairs. And we actually also have, I'm sorry, Deputy Hannah, and I really want to thank him. He's always been phenomenal. And I, we just appreciate the support. We appreciate that you support them when you come to these meetings, you're respectful, because it shows not just respect for us, but to them. So I want to thank you so much. Moving forward, under new and miscellaneous business, we have a motion, I need a motion to enter into closed session, I'll turn it over to Corporation Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under the Open Meetings Act, this body's allowed to go into closed session for certain specific reasons, and one of them is for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with a negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement. It's my understanding that this body wants to go into closed session to discuss two union contracts, the Teamsters, FOC Supervisors, and I think it's the Command Officers, Lieutenants, Captains of the Sheriff's Office. So you'll need to make a motion to go into closed session, and you need five votes via roll call.
I'll move we go into closed session for the purposes stated.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Missus Wenshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Brum?
Yes.
Missus Avery?
Yes.
Missus Schumaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzno?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayill?
Yes.
Commissioner Flouelling?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, we're now in closed session. All right, motion passes. We're now in closed session. We'll call this meeting back to order of the Board of County Commissioners at 6:51. We're going to need a motion on Resolution 2025-1897.
Support.
Have a motion to support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. That is it. We'll adjourn this meeting at 6:52.